The time is now six oh two, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Committee of the whole. Madam Clerk, could you please call the role?
Councilmember Matthew.
Present.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Milliwanby.
Here, thank you. At this point, we're gonna go into public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody register for public comment?
We do, we have one person to speak in person, that's Karen Consella, and we did receive an emailed public comment from Dave Cobus.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna go ahead and read a statement. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. So Karen, if you could please step forward.
And Mayor, also, we do have Mary Carlyle, I forgot to say that one.
Oh, okay, alright.
Can I take my mask down while I speak?
Um.
Or do I need to keep it on?
You should keep it on.
I should keep it on, okay. My name's Karen Consella, I live in Julie Emig's work, she's been very supportive of me. I will have to say at this point, I'm in disagreement with the property tax increase proposed for building the expansion at the library. I wanted, in my email to all of you, I had given, given you some information about how every time somebody in a public office says, let's tax for this or tax for that, they're not taking into account the total tax burden of the individual taxpayer such as myself and my husband. So I prepared a handout here and I just put a few items on here and all of you have it, the handout, comparing twenty twenty, twenty-one expenses to twenty twenty-two expenses. And just heat, which we all know is going up, average cost thirty percent per household. Everybody here is going to be paying that too. Medicare is going up from one forty-eight to one seventy, a hundred and forty-eight dollars a month to a hundred and seventy, that's an increase. Gas is increased and I've put the price increase on there, on the spreadsheet for you. Food is astronomically rising, as we all know, with inflation. Licenses for vehicles, health insurance is rising for families. I averaged it, or I calculated out to be at least without this property tax increase, it's going to be two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents for the average person per month, per month. And then they are asking for another thirty dollars only, is how I heard. But it's only on top of everything else, that's taking it up to about three hundred dollars per person in this town having to pay an extra cost and inflation has not even stopped and we haven't even gone into twenty twenty-two. If you look at page two, my, I supplied you with my proper, my Nycor bit gas bill, it is more than doubled. So here in Bloomington, it's way off the charts. Gas is more than doubled here in Illinois. I want money to be used for the streets, if we have extra money, please, and the sidewalks. I can't tell you how many relatives of mine have come through this town and the first thing they say is, what is the matter with your roads? They walk on the sidewalks, what is the matter with the sidewalks? It's horrible. So I learned that forty-two percent of the roads, just the roads, not the sidewalks, in this town are rated fair to poor. So please, if we have extra money, let's get our roads, let's get our sidewalks, let's make it safe so that when we go to a library, which will eventually be improved, we have the streets to go there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it.
I have supporting documentation for all my statistics here, so I'm willing to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then last up, we have Mary Carlyle.
Hello. You ha, you all have a very important opportunity to remedy a situation which has been deliberately neglected for too many years. Each year for twenty-five years, the repair and replacement of old, out-of-date sewer systems on the west side have not received the proper priority on the budget. Each year for twenty-five years, mayors and councils who have preceded you have kicked the can down the road, which allowed this old sewer infrastructure to continue to deteriorate. Instead of dedicating, say, four million dollars a year for each year, just as an example, to gradually replace this crumbling sewer infrastructure, they sought instead to allocate taxpayer dollars for other purposes, which were unneeded, unwanted, or unnecessary. Many of the areas to which our tax dollars are spent are not even the responsibility of the taxpayer and by proxy, the local government. It is, however, clearly the responsibility of the city of Bloomington to take care of roads and the sanitary and stormwater sewer system. These are your responsibility as representatives of the citizens of Bloomington. These are areas we expect you to take care of with tax money. It is obvious that these areas have not been properly funded as they should have been and instead, funds were allocated for things outside the scope of what local government is tax tasked with caring for. Taxpayers place their faith and trust in you to take care of the services we elect you to take care of on behalf of the people who live here. Here's a question for all of you to thoughtfully consider. What if all of you had raw sewage and water come up in your basements every time it rained? Then what if you learned that this has been a problem festering for a couple decades because it wasn't important enough to have money allocated for repair? How would you feel about that? We know seven million dollars has been dedicated to repairs. We also know because of twenty-five years of neglect, the cost of repair has now ballooned to fifty to a hundred million dollars. And we also know that only so much work can be accomplished in one year. So how many more years of neglect and flooded basements are acceptable? If the time isn't now, then when? And if today is not the day, then when will the day arrive when the mayor and city council address this issue? This is a health hazard for the people who live with this problem. Please have the decency as human beings to allocate this thirteen point three million dollar, million dollars and make a good faith effort to break ground this spring on the west side neighborhoods impacted by this seventy-year-old failed and broken sewer system. Be the people who finally care enough about your neighbors to believe this issue deserves priority. Be the people who finally see the importance of your neighbors on the west side. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, is this everybody?
Yes, that was everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there, does anybody wanna remove this item from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, motion by councilmember Bowlin, is there a second? Okay, second by councilmember Becker. Should we go ahead and vote, we're ready?
Okay.
Electronic vote. We're fancy here. We're missing one more person. Councilmember Urban. The pressure's on. Yeah?
We could just do verbal, are you good with the?
Yes, alright. Thank you, surprisingly, the item passes, so. Next item on the agenda is the regular agenda. Item A, presentation and discussion of Western Avenue Community Center's history and programming as requested by the administration department. So at this point, it is a presentation only, so I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. Thought we would take the opportunity this evening to ask the Western Ave representatives come and present. They've been a pillar of this community for decades and the deputy city manager and I met a couple of months ago out there with the board chair, Mr. Mike Jones, and the newish executive director, Mary Tackett, and we thought that this was an opportunity to share a little bit of the history, but also more so just sort of a renewed energy, I believe is an accurate way to describe that. So Mr. Jones and Ms. Tackett, if you would, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you and thank you.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Mr. Gleason, it's really our pleasure to be here this evening to share with you the Western Avenue story. First, again, my name's Mike Jones, Board President at Western Avenue. Lifelong Bloomington Normal resident, growing up in Bloomington and attending the Western Avenue Community Center since I was age seven. To my right is Mary Tackett, our newly, which is a relative term, she's been with us since June and has just done a fabulous job in terms of the programs, her leadership in terms of focus for what we're trying to accomplish at Western Avenue. I'm just gonna give a real quick kind of a backstory, back history about Western Avenue, then I'm gonna turn it over to Mary to, to really tell the story in terms of what we're doing. This July, we celebrated, we had an anniversary party. Western Avenue has been on the same corner of West, Northwestern Avenue and Locust Street for ninety-five years. In nineteen twenty-six, the doors opened, founded by Reverend Frank Breen. And believe it or not, he raised money with a number of community leaders to build the facility and I, as I recall, it cost about thirty thousand dollars. So those are nineteen twenty-six dollars, I can imagine what inflation would do to those dollars today. It was a church and recreation center. And in nineteen sixty-nine, the church disbanded and we just became a, a community center for the community. In nineteen eighty-one, the, the building burnt down to the ground and Second Presbyterian Church, which was the owner of Western Avenue, rebuilt the building and that is the facility that you see in the first slide there, that we currently occupy. We're, we're currently, currently supported by Second Presbyterian Church. We've had great support from State Farm, other churches, businesses, and individuals throughout our ninety-five-year history. Today, we serve over eighteen hundred families per year in the community and has many friends and supporters who I run into often who say, I grew up at the center. They talk fondly of the time that they've spent there. So with, without further ado, I'm gonna bring Mary up to talk more about some of the programs and services that we offer out of Western Avenue.
Thanks, Mike, and thank you all for giving us the time to present today. My name is Mary Tackett, I just started in my position in June, but I'm not new to Bloomington Normal. I graduated from Illinois Wesleyan in two thousand twelve, so it's, and I actually interned with Socorro Alvarez, who's our Hispanic Outreach Director, so it's a very fun, come full circle experience for me. Western Avenue has been a first responder to the needs of Bloomington Normal. Our programming has changed, but they've always aligned with our mission of opening doors of love and hope with our faith in Jesus Christ. And so when all of our programming has been to support people, to give people that push, connect them with resources that, that they need to make them feel loved and to make them feel safe and to give them hope. If we could go to the next slide, please? And the next one. Western Avenue Community Centers programming is built on pillars, education, recreation, well-being, and health. And so I wanted to start today to talk about our educational programs. First, I wanna start with Sisters by Chance, this is the third year of this program. It started as the girls program, so the name has become a little more creative. And it's focused now on eighth grade girls, it's an empowerment program, it's an enrichment program. We're taking these young women out into the community, connecting them with professionals and organizations that can show them what they can be and really focus on that career readiness piece. And right now, we have a small group of women, young women, but we wanna expand that as we continue on. Secondly, we have our after-school club, this is for fifth through eighth grade students. Right now, we've partnered with the Bloomington Junior High School to get our students there. We provide them with a meal, we've partnered with Illinois Wesleyan and Illinois State University's pre-service teachers to give the students one-on-one tutoring and then we provide additional programming for the rest of the evening. Again, we take them on field trips, we're trying to get our kids from our center, a lot of them are coming from the west side to get them out into the rest of the community. We've also opened a computer lab at Western Avenue Community Center. We've recognized, especially with COVID, the lack of access and lack of knowledge with technology and so we wanted to be a place where people could come. We, people can print, scan, create documents, browse the internet. Moving forward, we'd love to get more classes in there, but just access is the first step to, to bridging that gap. We've also been lucky to have a great partner with Heartland Community College. Starting this fall, we had an adult ESL, English as a Second Language class. And we just renewed our agreement with them that they'll be with us through spring as well. And so it's been really nice to have that community there with us. Next slide, please. Another one of our focuses on health, I know in our history, learning from Mike and others, that we've even had an in-house doctor at Western Avenue Community Center, so providing that health is a really important focus for us, especially because of where we are and bridging that gap and having access for people in our community. We have senior exercise classes that this group started as a very loyal three and has now grown to close to fifteen seniors that come Tuesdays and Thursdays and work with Orman Jones to do low-impact strength balance exercises. There's a woman there who's ninety-five and she's there every time, walk and lap, she's amazing. We also have, in connection with health, mental health services, we provide free bilingual family counseling. This year, we've serviced sixty-three families, individuals, excuse me, and that includes families, couples, and children. Really excited and proud of that program to support people with language needs and it's also free, so people who don't have access to insurance or need that, or don't have that financial choice or liberty to receive therapy or counseling, they can come to us. We have a martial arts program that's for youth and then we also have work, which is a cardio dance program similar to Zumba. So those are our physical health programs. Can you go to the next slide, please? We also focus on recreation. We know, especially during the pandemic, that isolation was a big part of a consequence of the pandemic. We also know children face isolation and not having their normal extracurricular programming and so we really have tried and are proud of the programming that we have to let people relax and create relationships and have fun. And we have senior dinner dances, they're quarterly, they're themed for our seniors. We have a cards day where the seniors come to the center and then we also have a movie day for our seniors. They do, they did not enjoy My Fair Lady, but we, we gave it a go. We've got about a loyal group, about fifteen, fifty seniors who come to our different events. Next slide, please. Continuing on with recreation and with our senior focus, we have bingo and that's once a month. We provide prizes and lunch. And we also recognize that there weren't a lot of Spanish-speaking seniors coming to our center, issues with transportation, trust, and language. And so we created a program, it's Lotteria, it's essentially bingo, but instead of numbers, it's pictures and each picture has a little phrase. And so we started having Lotteria events at our, at our center. The goal is that we will have our bingo players learn how to play Lotteria and our Lotteria players will learn how to play bingo and then we can have a more regular scheduling of both of those events, which I'm excited about. And then we also have our team club, I mean, this is just a place for kids to come play basketball, play video games, do art, just, just talk, right now, our teams are making blankets for our seniors and so that's just another place where kids can feel safe and have a place to go. Next slide, please. Our, our other pillar is well-being, um, back to that love and hope and security and support. We wanna make sure people are feeling good and, and feeling safe in their community. And a lot of that is providing resources and support and knowledge, they are breaking that gap of how to navigate different systems. And one of the stars of that navigation is our Hispanic Outreach Program. Our Hispanic Outreach Program has served over a thousand families starting in January and Socorro Alvarez and her team works with anyone who's Spanish-speaking immigrant, American-born, doesn't matter, who lacks the social, cultural, and language capital to navigate the Bloomington Normal and the American systems. And a part of that program is interpretation. We provide interpretation source, resources in medical cases, at courts, at schools. We also do translation, we provide Spanish, French, and American Sign Language translation and interpretation. And Saul is our interpretation coordinator, is busy running all over McLean County to provide those services. And we've also have a food program, we've been blessed to partner with the Tinnervan Family Foundation to provide non-perishable food boxes to the community. Our relationship with them started at the peak of the pandemic before I got here. During that, you know, that initial crisis of getting food out to people and we've been able to continue that programming, program distributing over three thousand boxes this year. We've also partnered with State Farm to get additional kinds of foods, sugar, oil, things that family can use to cook and we've currently partnered with MCCA to provide fresh produce to families. So we're excited about working to promote or just battle food insecurity in our community. We've also partnered with CCSI, Community Care Systems Incorporated, they come to our center once a month and meet with center, center, get citizens, excuse me, and navigate the really sometimes often difficult and tricky insurance policies or Medicare or Medicaid and they also have a focus on helping senior citizens with disabilities. Again, just navigating systems, giving supports, taking the time to sit down with someone and answer questions and that's a big part and focus of our Hispanic Outreach Program on CCSI. Next slide, please. So that's where we are now, um, opening those doors of love and hope, supporting people, making people feel safe and this is where we would love to go. As Mike said, we've been around on the corner for ninety-five years and I think that says a lot. It says a lot about our staff, a lot about our building and a lot about our community and a lot about the Friends of Western Avenue. And so we wanna maintain that presence, we wanna maintain that reputation for everyone as part of the Western Avenue Community Center family and then also reach out farther. Our summer camp, we had kids from Normal coming to our center. So knowing that our services are touching people all over McLean County and being cognizant of that.
Can I interrupt you for, for a quick second?
Yeah.
Okay, can I ask, Mary, could you please make sure you wear your mask? Sorry. Okay. You proceed, thank you.
Yeah. We also want to expand our programming to create this continuum of service. Right now, as you saw, we have pockets of programs, but if we can create programs or support all the way through, so if, for example, I'm a single mom coming to a food box, to get my food box, or I'm coming to an exercise class, is there someone that can watch my kid? Can I provide transportation to someone or deliver food to get a person somewhere? Taking away those barriers and creating services all the way through from zero all the way to their senior programs and their Zeke walking around at ninety-five. We wanna have programs for all of our clients and supporting them all the way through, whether they're in a basketball program and we can mentor them to get them into a career, anything like that, to support them all the way through. And we do have really strong partnerships in Friends of Western Avenue already, but we wanna continue that work, meaning more with, with other professionals, community members, and other nonprofits. We are connecting with McLean County United Way on Workforce One Eighty, that's an initiative to provide career readiness with support systems with young adults or non-traditional adult students, getting them the support that they need to stay within McLean County and, and get a job and be successful and that aligns directly with our goal of creating a continuum of service. We also want to connect with the broader donor base. Right now, a third of our, almost a third of our donations and revenue come from churches and we wanna expand that, we, we are really grateful for those relationships, we're focusing more on endowments, grant development, corporate, we have less than twenty percent of our revenue comes from corporate sponsors, so how can we utilize the organizations that we have here to, to share our story and get support for what we do? So that is who we are, that's where we're going. Western Avenue is open to all of you to come visit at any time. We'd be happy to have you and give you a tour, answer any more questions or any more specific questions, but right now, are there any questions for us?
Sure, thank you very much, I really appreciate having the opportunity to learn more about Western Avenue Community Center and certainly look forward to visiting one of these days and to see for myself what, what you guys do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'm gonna open it up for questions. Okay, Councilmember Crumpler and then Councilmember Matthew.
This isn't a question, I, I just so appreciate the work that you do. A few years ago, I was invited by a group of pre-service teachers to attend a year in celebration of, at the, of the tutoring program and I came on, on an afternoon and I was treated to a delicious meal and I got to meet with the families and the kids and they had a dramatic performance and I was so struck by the strength of bilingual education development and the progress they had made with proficiency in both languages and I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate the work you're doing, I would support anything that's going on at the center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, hopefully we get treated to delicious meals when we visit.
I will remember.
Don't surprise us and we'll make sure.
Alright.
I didn't have any questions either, I just wanted to again say thank you for all the work that you do. I've been at the center a few times, I think I built that computer lab the first time and I still think of the murder mysteries that you hosted, the fundraisers, I hope we can get back to those, they were a lot of fun. I still have a signed Scooby Doo print from both Hannah and Barbera that I won in one of the auctions at those, so I see that in my office every time I sit down, so love that part. But, you know, just keep up the amazing work and keep getting the message out and, and keep being amazing. I know that the board and the staff have always been so kind and generous every time I've been there and just, you know, let us know what you need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ward and then Councilmember Emig.
Yes, I also would like to just thank you for the work that you do, it's good to see you again and thank you for being such a stalwart presence on the west side and I'd like to, to say anything that I can do personally with Sisters by Chance in particular, I'd be very interested if you just reach out.
Excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes, thank you for your presentation, we were very thrilled to partner with your organization at the museum when we created our Ofrenda for Dia de los Muertos and it was, it's just really nice to, to see all of these efforts converge. And my, I also wanna applaud the work you're doing with Workforce One Eighty and I, and that, that initiative about the, the kind of wraparound services that are provided, it's not just funding someone's education and a career, but what do they need in order to make that possible, transportation, childcare, and all of that. So I, I just wanted to, to give you a specific shout-out for that. My question to you is, is as you work with the community and we're, you know, kind of the steady slog through the pandemic, what would you identify as the most significant needs that you, that you still see out there?
I'll, I'll start with that, so. As we work with a number of community leaders, I was also able to sit on a coalition led by the United Way and one of the primary discussions that we had was around youth programming and services, oh, daycare services. There was just a inherent lacking there in terms of availability during the pandemic and out of that, with kids being out of school, one of the areas of focus has been around behavioral or, or mental health and I, I think we've all seen that somewhat play out in our school systems and that is one of the concerns coming out of the pandemic that we wanna be able to be a part of in terms of addressing. Hope that answers your question. I, I might, I wanna say one thing, I, I hope the community is, is and can be and is proud of Western Avenue. To my knowledge, we are the only downstate center, community center that provide the diverse types of services and programs that, that we just shared with you and I just think that is so important for a community our size to be able to offer what we offer out of Western Avenue. So thank you for your support.
If I can piggyback off of Mike's comment, that mental health piece, talking to our food, my food program director, my, my directors with their, with the senior and youth program and even with Socorro, it's just that element of hope and understanding, right now, we're, we're not like, most of us hopefully are not like enclosed in our house and isolated. enclosed in our house and isolated and you know, completely stressed out. But we're not normal, right? Like, we're not like, everything's great and everything's fine. Like, we're in this place in the middle and we've been there for a really long time. And that's stressful. That's stressful for kids. It's stressful for parents. It's stressful for caregivers. It's stressful for providers. And so just, just acknowledging that. Am I okay? Like, what, what do I need? And so when I talk to my program directors, that, that listening piece, that, that that empathy, that sympathy piece, you're afraid, you don't know what to do. Taking that time to talk to them with our kids, that childcare piece of building relationships with kids and, and kids just interacting with each other. That, that, that support is the biggest thing that I see that we're, we're trying to, to navigate through all the programming that, that we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cribbin.
Thank you for the work that you do. And thank you for sharing some of the plans you have for the future. And I think since your organization has been involved in the community for so long. One of the discussions we're going to have after, after this is about how to spend some money that we've we have or will receive from the federal government. And we hope that you're part of that conversation as well as other stakeholders in the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I was hoping that would come up tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
I just want to say thank you. Really enjoyed the deputy city manager and I meeting a couple of months ago, had been there prior to that. And just really felt this would be a welcome presentation for the community and for the council. So thank you. Nice job. Thank you.
Thanks again, and we look forward to visiting at some other point. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a presentation discussion on American Rescue Plan funding as requested by the Administration Department. And I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Gleason for some introductory comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and to the community. This is a very brief presentation by, by myself and Deputy City Manager Tyus. What we've prepared for council this evening to continue this discussion on the ARP funds that City of Bloomington has received to the tune of nearly thirteen point four million dollars. We're very fortunate. There also is very specific spending that is allowed. And I think the biggest thing is we're in no rush to obligate the funds. We have a couple of few years to work through that as a council as we prioritize what the community's needs are. We have obligated some of the funds related to a couple of the public works, infrastructure projects. And those have been discussed previously, but at this time I'm going to turn the floor over. We've got a four or five PowerPoint slide presentation. And then the majority of the time belongs to council.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Still haven't figured out the glasses thing. Sorry. And so really, as the manager talked about, we have the American Rescue Plan whereby cities and towns and townships and villages were allocated roughly sixty-five billion dollars, I believe. And that was signed into legislation in March of twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please, Phil. As, as we, as the manager talked about, the city's allocation was just more than thirteen million dollars. We have received our first allocation back in May, which was roughly six point six million dollars. And the second installment is expected at some point next year, roughly twelve months after, for another six point six million dollars. Those funds have to be allocated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And by obligated, that means that the expenditures have been approved by council and that we actually have a purchase order for the work to be done, whatever it is that is decided to be done. And so council approval and purchase orders in hand. Again, as the manager talked about, we still have some time to do some planning. And in looking at other cities, they are in, in the same spot for, for the most part. There are some who are further ahead. There are some further behind in terms of planning, but we've still got some time for planning. Please go to the next slide. The US Treasury talks about, they, they give examples of how we can spend the money. They don't tell you specifically, but they give you examples and they have overarching objectives for how the money can be spent. Some of these are, would be self-explanatory, but others may need a little bit of explanation. So for example, we know water, sewer and broadband infrastructure, that's self-explanatory. But some of the other areas, like when you talk about replacing revenue loss, that allows recipients to replace budget shortfalls in some cases, based on a formula that they've given us that builds annual growth into what you can actually use from the funding to replace revenues. If it's, so it builds in growth and it's based on the year before the pandemic hit. And so the last year of quote unquote, normal revenues is the baseline. And then there's a formula that you have that allows you to determine what you can utilize for revenue, for revenue replacement. The category of addressing negative impacts examples are things like, you can do things like small business loans and grants. You can do, help with recovery for, for impacted industries such as tourism and travel and hospitality. One of the things that we've talked about tonight with Western App and that we will talk about a little bit later are equity focused services. Where we are able to address systemic public health and economic challenges that have contributed to the, the unequal impact of the pandemic on certain communities. We've all seen it. We've seen the news. We've seen how that, there are certain portions of our community that have been unequitably, if that's a word, impacted. And there are allowances here to try and address some of those systemic problems that have led to some of that, that inequity. And so with that and with those categories and we are we've wanted to provide you with some possibilities for categories for spending. Again, not necessarily specific programs, but with categories for, for spending. But before I go to that, I wanted to ask if the manager has any comments or thoughts or questions. All right. Next slide, please, Phil. So based on what we just talked about and based on the rules, we are, we are providing some possibilities for categories of expenditure for your consideration as we go forward. Again, some of these obviously will need some fleshing out. We obviously would need to come forward with what those programs would look like and what the dollar figures would actually be. But we wanted to start to form a structure for your consideration. So one of them we talked about, we have talked about is stormwater management. And again, as, as we talked about earlier, there's have been some funds obligated to projects for that, but that category of spending. What can we do in that category to, to, to utilize these funds? And we've talked a lot about the Locust Colton Project. We've talked about hydraulic modeling, modeling. We've talked about these opportunities to address our systems throughout the community. To, 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 to impact our, our stormwater management and where the water goes once it rains, basically. We talk a lot about road improvements in this community. You heard conversations tonight about roadway improvements. Are there opportunities here to replace lost revenue to first keep up with our current schedule? Over the last several years, we've, we've allocated more money than we had in previous years, more than we perhaps ever had. But one of the things that we know is that these last couple of years, we'll probably see a decrease in revenues. So do we utilize some of the funding to, to help with that shortfall? One of the other things that we've talked about, and I think it was actually Councilmember Becker, who has consistently said, yes, we're spending six to seven million dollars, but is there more work that we can do? We know that there's more work. We also know that there's a capacity issue right now. So can we work to also increase capacity in this community to do more work and allocate more funding? Because we believe that this formula will perhaps allow us more money to be used towards road, road improvements than we had already allocated. And so one of the things that we've talked about over the last couple of years frankly, is how do we get local companies to possibly be able to do more roadwork? And, and obviously we, we haven't figured that out yet, but are there other opportunities to perhaps have companies come to our community frankly, and help with some of the additional work? So increase work if, if we can increase capacity. Downtown, we talk a lot about downtown. We know that there are going to be significant water and sewer improvements down there. There, there, there's mains underground there that need some work. Do we use a portion of the funding for that? We're talking now about streetscape improvements and that's not just pretty trees and lights. It's not, it's more than that. It's, it's completely bringing a new energy and feel and, and, and creating recreational opportunities in our downtown as well, which in turn impact the entirety of the community. When you bring, when you create, create these senses of place, you're, 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 you're bringing more people downtown, which in turn helps with revenues. And again, it gives people that quality of life that we want, that we want to see. Next slide, please, Phil. Equity, again, and that's a pretty broad term, but are there opportunities now to do things to address some of the systemic issues that led to that disproportionate impact of the pandemic on parts of our community? One of the things that we talk about is let me back up. We talk a lot about job training and training opportunities. We talk a lot about the fact that there are a lot of jobs out there and we talk about the fact that there are people out there who want to work, but for some reason there's a gap there. Can we do things to help to fill that gap with some of this funding? You know, it's, it's easy to say, oh, we'll provide job trainings and people will come and then they'll go get jobs and everything will be great. Well, unfortunately, there are a lot of reasons, some of which were discussed tonight, that people, that doesn't, that there's more to it than that. There are people with traumas who, for example, where it's not as simple as coming to a training and learning and going and get a job. There, there are traumas that impact them and can hinder them from, from doing that. One of the things talked about tonight was trust. You know, there are trust, there are trust issues with, with certain portions of our population, who it's not as simple as, hey, come get this training and, and, and you'll get a job. You know, there are trust issues. Can we address? When you talk about this three hundred sixty degree targeted training, there are opportunities to possibly also address those issues. As, as we talk about preparing people for our community, for, for work in our community. The other thing that's fantastic about this, the city and this community is that we've got growing industries that are hiring like, like never before. We also want to make sure that portions of our community, certain, all portions of our community have equal access to that work and to those jobs. So can we, for example, target training opportunities or build upon those training programs to make sure that they're expanded into the entirety of our community? There are opportunities like that, that we believe are possible. Scholarships. Doesn't, I don't think, need any explanation, but can we provide scholarships, housing and community health initiatives as well? And so when you talk about equity, it's really making sure that there's equal access to all that this community has to offer. So it would be another potential category for us to focus on. And again, we would come back to you with what that would look like. And finally, as you talk about council ward initiatives, and again, these are just possibilities that we've discussed. You know, is there an opportunity here to set aside a portion of this funding and say to all of you, please take the opportunity to go to your wards and talk with the people in your wards about what they want, what they need, what they would like to see. And then you gather that list. And again, this is, you know, we, we haven't flushed it out. You gather that list and then you come back and have a discussion about, based on this pot of, pot of funding that is available. These are the projects that are possibilities and you decide as a council and mayor what some of those projects are as well. So again, these are potential categories. We, we understand that they need some fleshing out, but we're trying again to provide sort of a framework for how we potentially go forward with the, with the allocating of this funding. I don't have anything else. Tim, I don't know if you do.
I do. Thank you, Billy. These, what has just been presented in this slide and the previous slide by the deputy city manager, collaborative effort. You know, amongst the directors. So this is a staff product for council to view the community and ultimately the council discussion. But we get the most excited honestly about these last two that's on the current slide. Well within the parameters for an allowable expense for these funds. Definitely do not want to go outside the boundaries for that. But this has a connectivity to so many other conversations that we've had in the past, whether it's privately, whether it's part of a public conversation, pre-COVID, amidst COVID. When you talk about workforce as an example and the demands on this community. And this is an allowable expense, COVID related. We've got a, a population within this community that's unemployed, may not know what they don't know. And this is an opportunity for us to step in and potentially dramatically change our life. So it's exciting. But I know that the deputy city manager is nearing the end of this. But I just wanted to jump in and thanks for giving me a, a, the ability to do that. But these are the two that is staff. We get the most excited about hearing more.
Thank you. And with that, that, that is all we have. And so we, we would entertain council discussion. Well, thank you very much for a great presentation, Billy, and, and giving us an opportunity to, you know, to put some contour around what we can do. I definitely appreciate that. And I, and I am as well excited about the, the opportunity to, to help some of the members in the community who have you know, suffered a lot more through COVID, but at the same time, you know, being able to connect that with employers as well. Because I know there's a need there. And if you can bring the two together, I think that's, that's great. With that, I, I'm gonna give council a, a chance to provide some comments and reactions. Looks like Councilmember Emig, you have your light up?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. And thank you for that, that framework. And I just want to make a, a few points too, that I've been thinking about and share with city staff and my colleagues and the community. That I recently looked at a Brookings Institute, you know, overview of, of a framework for how communities might spend this funding. And one of the questions posed, which I thought was really helpful, was in ten years from now, will you look back and say, did we just spend the money or did we invest it? So I like that we're thinking about broader notions of diversification. And the categories within that question that really stuck with me was first, you know, well, what do we need to do to stabilize? What, what's immediate? So you asked, in terms of what we can realize for revenue replacement, there's a formula. So we, we know what we may have lost and therefore thinking about the, the need to stabilize our funding on roads, which is something that all of us are committed to continuing, to think about green and gray infrastructure initiatives and the baseline for longer term recovery. I think that's, that's one facet that's important to consider. But then there's also this equity or inclusivity focus. How, how feasible would it be to wipe out the remaining water bills for residents, for example, or a percentage of that? How do we bolster organizations to provide support to the most vulnerable? And for me, I would definitely want not just to turn to the constituents in my ward, but to those who serve those individuals directly. Such as the, the individuals we heard from this evening. Do we need to expend more on workforce development? And that is hand in hand with increasing capacity to do these kinds of, of jobs that we need. What about our mental health needs? Do we need to find ways to, to incentivize or fund education for, for people who can provide greater and more diverse mental health services? Affordable housing is also a really important issue. And I've heard from many members of, of my ward about the importance of all three of these as well as, as the roads. And, and finally, the, the third part of that framework was how do we organize? We can't do this alone. Teamwork is required. Some communities are developing regional coordinating councils. So they're pooling their resources to provide more support for more people. So I certainly don't want us to get so siloed that we're not leveraging each other together to, to find ways that we can do a lot more when we consider how we cannot just work together, but maybe even, you know, if there's a, a housing, affordable housing initiative. Maybe we can work in partnership with the town of Normal or McLean County. So there's really an opportunity to go beyond what we're, what we're doing. So I'm, I'm excited to consider all of this and I, I agree that to do it right requires some time and research and hearing from others. So thank you. I agree that to do it right requires some time and research and hearing from others. So thank you for giving me the floor.
Okay, I'm gonna go with, uh, Councilmember Ward and then Councilmember Becker.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I would echo the, the appreciation, not only for the presentation, but also for the, the opportunity to really take some time and do this right. Um, I think this is a, I mean, not every day do you have something like this sort of fall into your lap and, and I hope that we can, can take the time to do it right. One of the things that I think is high on my, my mind in regard to that is that as of today, there's another federal program coming in the direction of, of local communities in terms of infrastructure. And so I'm curious to, to really get a handle on what kinds of things, um, might be covered by the federal infrastructure monies that would not necessarily be covered by the ARP monies and vice versa. Cause I'd hate for us to, to spend money on one thing and then not be able to spend it on another, if that makes any sense. So that's something pretty important to me to see us look into. Um, I'd also be very curious, uh, you know, high on my list of priorities has to do with using either the ARP money or the infrastructure money to deal with, um, with ADA accessibility um, issues that we've been kicking that can down the road a long time. Um, obviously this, the, the sewer and the roads are, are issues that need to be attended to. But there are also issues around affordable housing, um, particularly for seniors. And in any of those projects, I really would love us to have a focus on doing those things in a sustainable way, whether that means, um, you know, building affordable housing or renovating affordable housing in such a way that, that makes it sustainable from, and, and affordable, partly because people can pay their utilities and, and so forth. Um, I, I have some cur- curiosity about whether the ARP dollars can go toward addressing issues of the food desert on the west side. So these are all high priorities that I'm hearing people talk about in my ward.
Thank you, Councilmember Becker.
So when we look at this, how the timeframe we have to spend this is several years. So let's say, starting this year all the way through twenty twenty six, correct?
Yes, commit by twenty four.
Just, just as an example. So that's, let's say we're, we're just talking about a four-year window. If we just look at the roads in that four-year window and say that seven million is what we need to stay afloat and move forward, if we were started at level, right? If we, since we're starting below level, we need more than seven million. We're also gonna lose money probably for the next two years out of that funding. So there's three, four, five, six, seven, eight million right there. It's, that can be allocated for something that's absolutely necessary. What I don't want people to misunderstand is there's a lot of good ideas here. The workforce development, I'd love to see better work for, workforce development across the community. Um, work with the EDC on that and so forth. But thirteen million is not a windfall. It's a small amount of money when spread over that many years. We're gonna have to be careful to not give fifty thousand here, a hundred thousand there, that isn't gonna do any good for the long term. That would be, to Julie's point, spending and not investing. We need to put significant amounts of money in the places where we can really have a long-term impact to make the city better. And, and I don't mean that, again, a, a twenty thousand, a fifty thousand dollar investment in a certain area would be a bad thing. It's just, remember, we have needs that we have to do. And that thirteen million isn't that much across four years. It really isn't. So we need to be very careful that we don't lose focus.
Thank you, Councilmember Becker. Um, did you want to?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to, uh, comment to that, uh, Alderman Becker's, uh, comments about, uh, the locomotor fuel tax, uh, revenues. Uh, the previous council, and it's been continued, uh, you know, up through this fiscal year. Uh, we do have lost revenue related to the locomotor fuel tax. Uh, council's made a commitment of nearly, uh, six plus million dollars in, uh, road work. We call it asphalt and pavement, uh, repairs. One million of that is, uh, dedicated to sidewalks. Uh, I think we're in year six of a ten-year commitment to, uh, sidewalk improvement throughout the city. Uh, and this is definitely an area that, uh, we feel for the next couple of years, we could possibly supplement. Uh, we sort of took the approach, you know, looking around the dais and again, past conversations, is this an opportunity, you know, for a half dozen, two million dollar buckets to be invested in different things? That's entirely for council to, uh, decide at the end of the day and completely, uh, respect that. But, uh, uh, excited to, uh, take notes and, uh, see where we, uh, end up here.
Councilmember Montney.
I'd just like to reinforce the comments that Ning made. When you look at this as a percentage of our total spend, it's a very insignificant amount in that context. And when we look at the fact that the local government here, us, we're spending, um, you know, over fifty percent more than what we were spending just eight years ago. Making up the shortfall alone on the roads would take more than this money has the opportunity at low single digits as a percentage of our annual spend. And then in thinking about your comments, um, Deputy City Manager concerning equity, I can't imagine anything more disequitable than what happened with the combined sewer overflow in this event that we had this summer. There was a disproportionate impact with that particular storm event. And we have the opportunity to not address it all, but to make a difference in that by putting our resources toward infrastructure defined as streets and sewers, with sewers being the top priority from, from my point of view. What we saw appear today, um, really is dealing with the, uh, Locust Colton project. And it's also dealing with the hydraulic modeling. But I believe, and this is a question for you because I'm not certain about this, that we will still be under obligation with the Illinois, um, Environmental Protection Agency to decouple the remainder of our combined sewers, including those locations that aren't Locust Colton. Is that accurate?
I believe that's correct. Yes.
So in this sense, I guess I would kind of use the phrase, pay me now or pay me later. We are obligated to spend that money for that purpose out of the city's budget over these coming few years until that consent order is depleted. And we have an opportunity to front load spending in that area in order to address this matter. And even that will still leave an obligation for this council to continue to prioritize spending for the sewer infrastructure until that problem is completely remediated.
Thank you, Councilmember Montney. Councilmember Crevel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I just wanted to clarify something, um, on the combined sewers. So with regard to the difference between the combined sewer overflow and the combined sewer, uh, the Illinois EPA requires us to fix by a certain period of time, the, uh, combined sewer overflow. There's no similar requirements with regard to the combined sewers.
I believe that's the case, but I'll punt.
So what I wanted to say beyond that is, you know, I'm not the expert here with regard to what we should do with the money. I mean, I think we, we've got to listen to all residents and figure out multiple ways to, to do that, whether that's surveys, listening sessions, and not just listening sessions here, but in the community, uh, we need to reach beyond those that have the loudest voices. We need to ask community stakeholders, um, like the one tonight, just to say what our community needs. Uh, that's, that's everybody from large businesses, small businesses. Um, the McLean County Regional Planning Commission, NAACP, I could go on and on. Um, and, and, and like, uh, Julie said, with regard to how we can combine our resources, say, with the town and the county. Um, so I, I think we need to have all those discussions and we have time to do that. Overall, um, what I hope is that, um, we keep the most vulnerable of Bloomington's residents in mind. Um, we need to ensure that our historically underserved residents, neighborhoods, and commercial areas of the city are prioritized for support and reinvestment. These are areas that need access to affordable housing, fresh food, high-speed internet, and well-lit streets. Minority entrepreneurs with good ideas but little money to invest must be supported. They have much to offer. Um, on the infrastructure question, um, as has been noted, we've allocated, I think so far, um, about two and a half, two point three million uh, to infrastructure, uh, to accelerate Locust Colton and build a retention pond. Like, uh, Molly said, how much money are we gonna receive potentially from the new infrastructure bill that will have probably much more restrictions on use than, than the, uh, art money? Um, now, um, if we are to spend, uh, money on infrastructure, um, from the, the art money, um, I would like it spent on how to prevent backup of sewage for those on the west side who have combined sewers. Um, and, and we know our Public Works Department is looking into that issue uh, and coming up with solutions. And I, we should wait to see what they have uh, to come up with, to see how that can be done and how much money, uh, that'll cost. We should also think, do we hire more city employees for things that we need? Like, uh, do we need more inspectors for rentals, um, and for houses? If we're talking about affordable housing, we need to make sure the most affordable housing is also habitable and safe, uh, for our residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Crevel. Councilmember Crumpler.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I really appreciated, um, Councilmember Emig and Councilmember Becker's, uh, points about investment um, in long-term, um, projects rather than just trying to spend the money as, you know, quickly. Um, I actually agree with that. Um, you know, when I listen to, um, my constituents in Ward Nine, um, mostly what I hear is, it's communicated to me is, is, uh, again, um, it's been echoed over and over this evening is a belief in, in really putting money into, uh, repairing Bloomington infrastructure, um, including sewers and roads. Um, for me, um, I'm, I, you know, this council in the last six months has approved two capital projects. The O'Neill Pool, um, and we're working on improving the library. And, and I'm really proud of those projects and supporting both of them. And, and I really want to encourage us to think hard about investing as much as possible into an acceleration of needed infrastructure, um, sewers and roads. I think this would show a commitment to our community, you know, to work on a, a problem that's, that's been, um, with us for a long time and, and was exacerbated certainly, um, this June in, in, in the, um, floods. And the second thing that I really want to talk, I just mentioned, I am so appreciative of Councilmember Ward, um, that she mentioned, you know, ADA, um, issues, particularly in downtown. Um, we know that since two thousand fourteen, um, the council has had a draft plan on dealing with accessibility in Bloomington. It's, it's still in a draft. And whether it's, um, the current, um, art funds, or if we were to get, um, additional funding from the new federal, uh, infrastructure bill, moving, wa- moving forward to try to help think about increase, increase, excuse me, increasing accessibility in downtown Bloomington, I think should be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin.
Yeah, what I, forgive me, Billy. I'm not, I'm not seeing a whole lot of, um, COVID-related. When I read the information regarding these funds, that they have to be COVID-related and they are federal funds and the federal funds are allocated to the state as a recipient, the county as a recipient, and the municipality as a recipient. And in my opinion, each of those entities need to stay within their purview as to how they spend their money. Housing, we have a Bloomington Housing Authority, which, um, gets grant money from the federal government. That's where housing, um, money comes from. Um, mental health or any kind of health, that is a county issue and their money should be used. Now, I'm not against working together, but I have not seen that in the past. So there's that. Well, so what I'm saying is that it is the purview of the city to spend money on s- infrastructure or broadband. People talk about equity. Broadband would be a much better use to provide internet access to the larger community. And that too would help with, like we said, with the library. People can get, you know, apply for jobs. They can learn. Um, that's where I'm coming from. I don't see anything in this presentation that is COVID-related and within the purview of the city, other than the infrastructure. And we've heard people come up here time and time again, as long as I've been following this council, they want infrastructure. I've heard other council members that have been on the council for a while say the same thing specifically for the west side. I remember talking to Scott Black about his ward and downtown. And I said, I told him, and I will say it publicly, if, if you want to improve downtown, address the infrastructure on the adjacent neighborhoods. And that is where the money should be spent. Of course, Hershey and the other roads are important too, but take care of the old infrastructure. We've got to do that and we've got to do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. We probably should have a motion for more time, right?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. And for how much time?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes.
A second.
A second, um.
I'll just do a roll call really quick. That'd be easier. Uh, Councilmember Mathie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crevel?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So I think we're gonna go to Councilmember Mathie.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I love the fact that we have such diverse opinions on the council. Um, and, and I actually agree with everything that every one of you has said tonight. Um, the problem is, is that thirteen million dollars doesn't let me agree with everything every one of you said tonight, uh, which is exactly what Nick's point was as well. And, um, you know, I, I guess if I had to tell you uh, a few things that I see as topping my list of importance right now, um, ironically, for the first time I probably have ever said this, roads is not necessarily one of those things because roads aren't as important if you don't have a car. And a lot of the people that were worst, uh, the, the worst hit with this, um, are the people who, who don't have cars. And, and we have funding set aside for roads. It's not whole right now. But we're, we're, we're going to get back to that. Um, but, but if we put some money towards roads, it wouldn't hurt my feelings at all. Um, I've been talking about sewers for years and years and years. Um, so I would definitely like to see us, uh, and at least start that process as well with investing into um, the hydraulic modeling that is necessary for the west side, um, and plus a couple of areas that aren't necessarily the west side, like the Evergreen Memorial Cemetery area that was also impacted pretty severely by the, the, the storms, uh, this year. And particularly South Hill was hit really hard, but that's, I guess that's kind of west-sided. It's a weird in-betweener space. Childcare is something that keeps coming back over and over and over again, that people can't go back to work because they can't find childcare. And I don't know how we would deal with that one. Um, but if we're talking about any sort of workforce development and we're talking about trying to, to help people get back to work, that's step one. We're stuck right there that people can't leave because they, they can't leave their house because they can't afford childcare. They don't have childcare. There are childcare centers that we already have in town that can't hire enough staff, um, to, to actually, uh, service kids uh, that they need so as well. So, so that's near the top of my list when we're talking about this stuff as well. Um, I love the idea around the workforce development of helping people and Um, I love the idea around the workforce development of helping people and maybe part of that is teaching people how to be childcare professionals, right? It's like, uh, you know, we provide childcare to them while they're learning to be childcare professionals to provide childcare to the next people. Um, kind of a self fulfilling circle there at that point as well. Um, a- a- and I think that, uh, mental health should be part of the conversation as well. Um, that's something that I'm hearing from a, a, a lot of teachers right now. That, um, and particularly around the, the children are, there's a lot of struggling that's still happening there and, and. Again, I don't know the best way to deal with that. I, I know that we provide money to the county from that property or that sales tax increase that happened before any of us were elected. I think that, uh, Tim, at some point, we, it would probably be beneficial to all of us to get a copy of that intergovernmental agreement. And see and, and get a report from the county in terms of how they're spending that money. Right? Because I think that that's something that we don't, we, none of us have actually seen the details of where that money is going. Donna's are. Please, whoever, I think that would be beneficial to all of us to see. Where the money that we're giving to the county for mental health is actually going and how it's being spent. So that we can supplement that if needed or maybe redirect it if needed, if it's not going correctly. So I, I, you know, I think that. I wanna make sure that we don't lose focus to, to Donna's point on the covid related costs, um, to our community. And a lot of those costs were on, um. Things that people couldn't afford when they lost their jobs and they haven't been able to go back to work. So that's childcare. That is water bills that people, we, we know there was a WGLT report today. On how many people are still behind on their water bills. Um, and that's a real cost that just hangs over their head like a permanent burden. Um, as they're going forward of how do I pay for this to keep this and, and housing. The reason why housing is on that list is because we, there were, uh, an article in the Panograph that was talking about how many people have been evicted. Um, i- in the last month, number of filings at the county courthouse. So that's why housing should be on our, uh, radar. I am not proposing that the city. Build or run or do anything around housing, but, you know, I, I sent a council initiative that we'll probably talk about next month or maybe in January. To start thinking about how do we address affordable housing. Uh, Julie, I love the idea of if we can partner with the town or the county. On in, you know, some way to incentivize. Um, the private market to build more affordable housing to provide. You know, some way to fix up places that need to be fixed so that they're rentable, livable again. Whatever that looks like, we, we know that we have a shortage of housing of every type and every category, but particularly. Affordable housing right now. So I guess those are the top things that are on my mind right now is, is starting the ball for sewers. Figuring out childcare, thinking about mental health and then affordable housing. And I think, you know, roads are always important. We're going to build the sewers. We're going to build the roads. There will be money in other places, but. There are some specific things right now that are still the impacts left over from covid. That I think we could do, address quicker and faster to try to, um, lift everybody up. Uh, and, and get people back into this, uh, mental health, uh, place. You know, I think Mary said it very well earlier that. Um, you know, as we're all sitting around here, everybody in the room is still wearing a mask, that none of us is normal at this point. Um, and at some point, we're going to get that way, but investing in people and investing in the infrastructure to move us that direction. I, is where I would like to see us spend the money.
Councilmember Montney.
I recall a few months ago that the city arranged for all of us to, um, be educated on the. Treasury's guidance as to the, uh, specific restricted categories that these funds could be used for. And I feel like it might be helpful for us to have that conversation perhaps again and make sure we all left with the correct understanding. Um, myself included. Um, because as I looked through their guidelines in the interim final rule, which I understood became the final rule. There was very specific connecting points to covid losses. Not just broad general societal losses, but specifically those that were generated as a result of the pandemic. In addition than the water sewer and broadband infrastructure. Um, so again, if we've left with some misunderstanding from that prior discussion around the. U S Treasury Department's guidance, uh, I could really benefit from going over, um, that discussion again.
Uh, I'll just, we can absolutely do that. One of the things that we did in preparing this was to go over those as well. To make sure as best we could that some of the things that were being suggested were potential, were eligible. The other thing I wanna. I guess clarify is. I don't wanna lose sight of the fact that some of what we're allowed to do is to address some of the systemic issues related to why certain portions of our community. Were disproportionately impacted. So when you talk about mental health, those are, that scenario that. Led to some of that disproportionate impact. When you talk about housing and transportation and childcare. Those are areas that we know led to some of that disproportionate impact. So I, I wanna make sure that, that we were clear in saying that. That there, yes, there's the infrastructure and yes, there's the code related costs, but there's also that category that allows for. That allows for some of the spending if you so chose to be in those areas. The other thing I wanted to make sure. Councilmember Crable, that I answered your question correctly. You talked about the, the C S O. Our only, our requirement. Is to address the issue, the, the, the compliance sewer overflow. And so I wanna make sure that I answered that correctly. That, that is what is required.
Um, so Billy, before we leave that, do you mind to clarify what the total cost of completing that work is?
To, uh, I don't have the number. It's one that I can get for you, but I don't have the number. I don't know if anyone else here.
It seemed like I heard it was in the tens of millions of dollars to complete that work. Um, but that may, again, may be a misunderstanding. I, I would really benefit from having this. Facts as to exactly how much we're obligated to do there.
Absolutely, will do.
And real quick, uh, Deputy City Manager Phil. Do me a favor, pull up the presentation and go to, uh, slide number three. I think it'll help with, uh, some of the closing comments. And this is, you know, it doesn't go into the detail that the treasury document has provided. But this is not a staff summary. Uh, this is actually taken from allowable uses, uh, for, uh. Uh, for the A R P funds that cities received.
Okay.
Quick.
Okay, Councilmember Crumpler.
I've never understood, like, fully understood, any idea what premium pay for essential workers might be, as an example.
That actually is, uh, a, a payment for, uh, primarily public safety, uh, employees of municipal and. Counties to receive up to five thousand dollars per employee.
Okay.
Wasn't that for required overtime and things like that that were caused by covid? Wasn't that the main purpose?
There is what, uh, you know, our, our employees, uh, the union employees, uh, you know, regardless of. Uh, the department that they're in, uh, you know, for every, you know, fifteen minute increment, uh, they were paid. And if it was beyond the eight hour shift, it was at time and a half. Uh, but it is an allowable use, uh, that, uh, some communities have approved that direct funding. Uh, maybe not the full amount of five thousand dollars, uh, but to, um, I, I don't wanna say reward. But, uh, recognize, uh, what public safety faced amidst covid.
Okay, hey, Councilmember Bowlin.
Uh, yeah, I have, uh. Printed copy of the, the rules here and it talks about, uh. The negative effects or economic impact of, uh, toward public health. And it gives date frame, uh, framework also, and it says government. Let's see, provide that the recipient. Which would be local, the local government did not incur the cost of providing such assistance. Prior to. March third, twenty twenty one. So there's some kind of a framework of time. When this money or when this loss occurred. Do you understand what I'm referring to?
I believe that I do and, and. Uh, in terms of context of what that applies to.
Right.
I don't know what that is. I, I don't have that before me, obviously. But, and, and your point is well taken. We get it. I, I'd understand, get it completely. One of the things that we also know is that there are. As I said, longer term issues that led to, once this pandemic struck, that led to some of the devastation that we saw. That maybe was happening, but it wasn't an incurred cost to us, but it was, was things that were happening systemically. That led to some of what we saw. And so what we've talked about here today is. If there is a desire to try and address some of those issues, we believe, and based on our reading and based on our study, that it is something that could be allowable. Again, ultimately, it, it's, it's your choice and we understand that completely. Um, we just felt the need to provide you with, based on our study, some of the areas that you could consider. But I get, I get it completely. We get it.
I still contend something like mental health belongs on the, at the county level, not the, the municipal level. And if we're talking about public health and somebody mentioned equity, you know, public health, Miss Carlisle. Sewage in your basement. That is a serious public health issue. And again, I will repeat, we need to take care of the sewers. The thing about the streets, if you dig up the sewers and fix them, you get a brand new street. And these funds will pay for the, the street as well as. You know, as you dig up the sewer. So for me, it's a two for one and we have to invest in it anyway. Thank you.
Okay, last but not least. Councilmember Crumpler.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Deputy, um, uh, City Manager Tyus, I guess I wanna thank you for your presentation tonight. I, I thought the categories were really. Generative and I appreciated that. And I also, um, thought the conversation tonight among the council was really rich and a lot of great ideas. And I'm wondering, um, what, what are the next steps for us in terms of moving this discussion and process, um, of these complex decisions forward?
Oh, maybe. Tim's pointing at me. No, one of the things that will, thank you. One of the things.
That was gonna be my question as well, actually. What do we do next?
One of the things we'll do is take what we heard tonight from everyone frankly and see if there are trends there, et cetera, et cetera. We'll look at, we'll continue to look at what the rules are and make sure that where we're headed is, is where we should be, which we believe we are. Um, we'll come back to you with something more structured. That has maybe, I'll say more meat on the bones, um, in term, for you to consider, based on what we heard tonight.
The, uh, the Deputy City Manager knows the answer to this. It, it really is staff review. Uh, we, we take what we heard tonight. Uh, we replay many of the conversations that have occurred. Uh, we don't, uh, you know, uh, venture outside, uh, the boundaries, uh, or the parameters for an allowable expense. And this might not be the right way to describe this, but you have, uh, allowances for hard infrastructure. And, uh, I will say that you have allowances for things that might fall in the category of more social initiatives. Again, they have to be an allowable expense and I've got a diverse opinion amongst, uh, nine. Uh, elected officials that I serve and, and honestly, I think Alderman Mathie said it best. It, it's exciting to be a part of that. But at the end of the day, we'll have funds, uh, to spend to obligate the different, uh, projects. And, uh, I think fortunately we have the time to do it right.
Mayor, if you indulge me.
Didn't I say last but not least? All right, fine.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just, I don't know if I heard, like, what we plan to do for community outreach, you know, like surveys and listening sessions and those types of things.
I didn't wanna overstep my bounds. Uh, you know, each of the nine alderpersons that are represented. You've been elected to lead in, uh, the different awards that you represent. And I didn't want to assume that there was a need for outreach, but if that's the direction that I get from the council. Uh, that's definitely something that we can stand up.
Okay, was there anybody else? No, okay. It sounds good. I think this is a, a good, uh, ending point and thank you all very much for. Uh, providing feedback for the staff. Thank you, Billy, for, uh, a great presentation. I know the, the topic is really broad. It's, it's, it is exciting, uh, to have, uh, uh, this particular opportunity, but it, it's also, I think. Challenging and it will lead to, uh, I'm sure a lot of interesting and challenging, uh, discussions, but. Some that I, I look forward to. So I'm sure we'll, we'll come up with, uh, you know, what is, uh, you know, what are great ideas? Uh, for the community to, 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 uh, to pursue. And I wanna, um. You know, uh, highlight this idea of investment, you know, truly, I mean, there, there is definitely a great need for. Uh, you know, investment in infrastructure, but I, I think there are also other areas, uh, you know, if allowable. Uh, where, uh, we, we definitely should ask ourselves, ourselves, you know, is this, you know, the right investment? You know, should we invest in this particular area? I mean, the area of workforce development really interests me. Uh, particularly given the fact that I, I'm seeing that we have great momentum, uh, in the community, lots of good things happening. And this is where we definitely should ask ourselves if we should do something, uh, to further that momentum. Uh, because I know a lot of employees are struggling with, uh, you know, their workforce development and, and hiring and things like that. So. So, so these are just, you know, questions that we need to ask ourselves and there's no finality to it, but ultimately whatever we come up with, I'm sure will be. Uh, for the best for the community and we'll do it together. So, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a city manager's discussion because we haven't heard enough from him, so.
I tried to mix it up some. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, this first slide, uh, is one that, uh, we've, uh, communicated on social media. And, uh, media releases the past week or so, but I wanted to take another opportunity to, uh, share this with, uh, the community. Uh, I know the elected are very aware and have, uh, acknowledged, uh, this tremendous, um, uh, award, uh, achievement. Uh, the International Academy of Emergency Dispatch has certified the Communication Center as the world's twenty fifth. Emergency Police Dispatch, uh, Accredited Center of Excellence. Uh, the Bloomington Center is the first in Illinois to achieve this designation. Together with the City of Bloomington's Emergency Fire Dispatch, uh, ACE, they are the only third, they are only the third combination. Uh, in the world. This is truly, uh, quite the accomplishment. Darren Wolf is the Communication Director. Uh, obviously that's a part of the Bloomington, uh, and, and Bloomington Police and Fire Departments. And truly, uh, quite the accomplishment. So wanted to share that one more time. So congratulations, uh, to them. Next slide, please, Phil. Uh, new employees, uh, we have Holly, Dylan and Fernando that have been hired. Uh, in the month of October. We continue to recruit, uh, very well. Uh, and the, uh, diversity, uh, recruitment efforts of the city have gone very well. And, uh, we're finding that, uh, we're, uh, hiring top caliber, caliber employees for the city. So we're very excited about that. Next slide, please. Uh, downtownbloomington.org. I know I mentioned this at the last meeting and we've shared this. Uh, in, uh, releases, getting overwhelming, uh, positive comments about this, uh, website that we stood up. Uh, as, uh, a result of Melissa Hahn, Economic Community Development, Craig Macbeth, uh, in the I T department. It's been a, um, uh, effort, uh, with others as well, but, uh, please check this out. Uh, it's a, a good website. Not sure that I have anymore. Yes, I do. Small Business Saturday, November twenty seventh kicks off the holiday season. Please, uh, shop small, uh, Bloomington. And that is it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we do not have any executive session, so. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, looking at Council.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, second, Councilmember. Okay, second, Councilmember Becker. All those in favor, sing five by saying aye.